And good evening and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education's Study Session for Monday, June 14th of 2021. And it's calling this meeting to order at 5:32. And Madam President, if you wouldn't mind taking role.
Secretary.
Secretary.
Mrs. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Falaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, here. Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
And Mr. Sable?
Here.
Mr. Chair of a quorum?
All right. So we do have a quorum. And let me just get back over onto this page here. Oh, I don't have my book. And I don't have a signal. District. All right. Oh, team play, all right. So, okay, so with that, we do have three items on the agenda for our study session. So the first one is business updates. And I will turn that over to Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you. During the finance subcommittee, there were several questions that came to fruition during the meeting. And so I wanted to make sure that we went through those answers so that all the board members had the opportunity to hear the responses. I did put them in the Friday update, but I did also then want to reiterate the responses to those questions in case there were any other concerns regarding the questions. So the first question was, what is the process in placing for invoices? We do have a purchase order process or a requisition process. That process goes to the building and department, submit all the requisitions. You see all of those requisitions at the board meetings and approve those on a regular basis. Once they're approved, we send out the purchase orders, the purchases, the purchase orders to the companies that we're purchasing from. Those items then get shipped. The buildings receive the items, then they send approval for payment. The reason they send approval to the office for a payment is we don't always know if they've received all the items, if all of the items have come in not being damaged. So we need to make sure that the buildings are getting everything that they requested and that they didn't have to return anything before we pay for it. Then the vendors send the invoices. Sometimes the invoices go to the buildings. Sometimes they come directly to us. We then match the invoices with the requisitions and pay off of the approvals and the invoices. Those are processed every two weeks.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes.
That's not how the question was asked. What was asked was, how long is the process taking from when you receive it?
Correct. That was part of the process. And we also, the other two questions, I'm sorry.
But the question was, when you're receiving the invoice and what do you have in place that, like, the employees that are receiving those invoices? How long is it taking them to turn them in? And what's the turnaround time from your end to pay the invoice? That was the question.
Typically, two weeks, 30 days. We attempt to pay everything within 30 days.
I was just trying to, I was just trying to also gather what was being asked. So, okay, so it's all done within a 30-day period?
So, Mr. Chair, is that after or before a board approves it, the 30 days?
It's 30 days once we receive approvals. So the invoices and approvals. Typically, if we get an invoice, on the invoice it says net 30, we attempt to pay it within that 30 days.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Danielle?
Is there a time limit that staff has to put in invoice for reimbursement?
Typically...
For example, you know, I'm a teacher. I, you know, got some stuff and I'm looking for reimbursement. How long do I have to turn in my receipts to you?
For you to turn in receipts, if you purchase something outside of the scope of a requisition, then that, really, we don't have a time limit on that because of the fact that it could be through the end of the year. Just because a lot of teachers or a lot of staff, they may go multiple times throughout the year and buy $5 things here, and they put it in a bigger item. And realistically, if we're not asking them to purchase for reimbursement, they're doing it on their own, that's going to be on their aspect of when they return it.
So if we didn't ask somebody, can I just, I have a few, can I just?
Of course.
So if we didn't ask somebody to purchase something and they went out and bought it on their own, are we automatically reimbursing them? Or do they have to have justification for the purchase? Does the purchase have to be pre-approved? Is there an amount that they're allowed to spend without pre-approval? Those are my first three.
Okay. So...
So does the person, if the person doesn't have permission, do we still automatically reimburse them?
No. What happens, we don't automatically reimburse them. If the person goes out and buys it, typically what'll happen is principals will give them permission to go out. We don't always know that they do that, but they get the administrative permission. But then it still has to go through the requisition process, so it still goes through the purchase orders and all the account approvals and all of that. So on those cases, it may take longer because of the fact of when they put it in, when the next board meeting is. Because if they didn't get prior approval, then that's what delays the process.
Okay. So we, we actually do honor retroactive?
Yes. As long as, as long as the principals approve the purchase, there have been things where I've questioned things, where I've said, okay, what is this detail? What is this for? Where does this approval come from? Why did you go out without this? And we've changed some of the processes because of the fact that we know staff members do go out to Costco, they do go out places to buy things that they don't take purchase orders. So we do have the ability for a purchase order to be put into the staff member's name and say not to exceed $200 so that they can go to Costco and buy the supplies that they need for summer school or different things.
That's when it's approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then do we, so those are, we put that into place so it can be before they actually purchase, so they can have a purchase order. So then as soon as they get the invoices, they can turn in those receipts and get paid within the two-week period. Sure. Now, when you say we put that into place, does that mean there is a policy?
It's a procedure. It's not a policy. It's a procedure.
Okay. Is this like, can staff members find it in the staff handbook or where, where is the policy?
The procedure has been handed out...
In the procedure?
To all of the secretaries in the administration. And again, it'll be handed out in June and in August this year so that everyone has that again. We did that last year. With COVID, it was not as strictly followed due to COVID. But in the next upcoming school year, we can also put it on the website on the, for staff employees.
Also, if I could interject, I don't mean, and this is something that's brand new. So this is, it just rolled out, I believe, in...
2021.
Yeah, yeah, 20, yeah. So, you know, it's a whole new procedure.
Right. I just want to know, is there, so is there a limitation? So I bought something this year and I never turned in my receipt. Can I come to you in September or October or December and say this is...
No, it has to be 30 days within the end of the fiscal year.
30 days within the end of the fiscal year?
Correct.
30 days in the fiscal year, not 30 days for purchase.
We give some of them the end of the 30 days of fiscal year because sometimes, and I've, I've been seeing this a lot of times with teachers, they put it aside, they forget about it, then they find it when they're cleaning in the desk and cleaning out stuff. And we don't want to punish teachers for buying something and forgetting to turn in a receipt.
I don't see that as a problem, as long as you're double-checking with the principal that it was approved, if it, if you didn't already, if it's a retro.
Before we pay anything...
Which I don't think we should honor those.
Right. Before we pay anything, the administrator of the building has to approve it.
Can I, if I can add to that real quick, just for clarification as well? This is the first time all the building principals are going to have a unit budget, where they have to identify how they're going to spend and what they're going to spend. So that's why if the building principal says, yeah, it's coming out of this account number for this, we don't have an issue with it. Previously, they didn't have that. It was, you purchased, and then somebody from the business office would just pay or reimburse. That no longer is a procedure.
Okay. Just one other thing. I think for COVID...
Yes.
I, I don't know how anybody else feels, but I think for COVID, we should, you know, give a little bit of leeway on that for people who might have taken a little bit more time to turn in their thing. But if that's going to, you know, interrupt your fiscal year...
And that's why we, we kind of do the 30 days after June 30th, because even with COVID, because that's when our fiscal year ends. So then it's kind of making sure that we have everything by the end of July.
So a lot of the things that I've seen across the board is some people are extending the fiscal year, 60 to 90 days because, because of COVID. So like, our fiscal year's got extended.
Unfortunately, ours does not because it goes by the state fiscal year, so we're not, we're not allowed to extend it.
Okay.
Nadia?
Yeah. Can we just see, can the board get that? Because I know you're going to be making some changes now, from what I'm hearing, right?
The procedure?
Yeah. So can we get copies of that, if you don't mind?
Yes. I will have it in my Friday update because the administrators will be getting copies of it on Thursday.
Thanks, Penny.
Yeah. I got a couple of questions. First of all, the first question was going to be, don't they have independent budgets? I guess they didn't, which is crazy. It's like funneling into one big funnel.
They do have independent budgets, however, a lot in the past was not paid attention to, from what I can tell. So really, spending was very open in the district prior to 2021, and a lot of line items were just thrown in together.
Okay. Second thing is, have you thought about using a service like Concur, which allows the employees to go into the system, put the expenditures in, copy the receipts? The principal would have to approve, and then the second line approval will be you.
And currently, when they put the system in the requisition, they can attach the receipts, and there is a receipt portion that the principal approves as well.
I think you should tighten up the, my opinion, just a thought for you to think about because you don't want to get into, you know, matching fiscal years or overrunning a fiscal year for tax purposes, obviously. But it should be 30 days for purchase. And if they input it in the system, it makes things a lot easier so you don't have any problems. And I know we've talked about this in the past. Has something happened recently that's come up that we're doing this again?
No, I just wanted to know what the procedure is, not from the, what is it that they have to fill out, but from, what is the process from when the individual gets their items to send and the receipt? Are we giving them? Right. I wanted a timeline to see how long it's taking and where does it begin and where does it end?
If you can get that procedure, that would be great.
It is, and I'm sorry, President Garcia, as Penny had mentioned, this Thursday, we're having each, in the beginning of the year, the end of the year, and the middle of the year, I do administrative retreats where this is one of the agenda items. So this Thursday, HR has a block of time, business has a block of time, and so on and so forth. And then I have a block of time. And as Penny had mentioned, they're going to get all of the updates. It's going to be communicated to them because in August, the business office and the HR office are going to be with all the secretaries and give them updates too. And therefore, the same updates the secretaries have, the building principals will have. And we're going to continue supporting them through this because, as stated, there was a lot, there was too much leeway in the past. And we really have tightened it down, and that's helped us. Now that we've tightened it down, now we can really start focusing on, okay, where can we loosen up a little bit? Where do we need to tighten up a little bit more? Because now we know where the money's funneling through. Prior to, I know there were invoices that were showing up on my desk from 2019 that weren't paid or underpaid or this. And it was like, so I just wanted to reiterate to the board that that's the process, where every administrator, every secretary will know this process, a procedure. Moreover, we share that procedure with the teachers when they come back during our professional. So it's a series of professional developments because we have two professional development days before the school year started with our new contract, where a part of that will be looking at procedures so that the teachers are well aware. So I just wanted to make the board know.
And I think you've done the step-by-step. I mean, you've met with the finance committee early on, letting us know that the procedure was going to be changed in regards to the protocol and the requisitions and so on and how those POs would be done, so.
And with COVID, it just made it slightly more difficult to enforce some of the things that we needed to do.
And now there's a whole administrative change, so now everyone will be part of this new change. Change, my apologies. Salwa?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So from hearing what you're saying, the threshold sounds like it's $200. Does that mean they have the flexibility to spend up to $200? And is it a different procedure under that amount versus over?
That's not necessarily, that was an example. That wasn't the threshold.
Okay. So is there a threshold?
The threshold is really decided by the principal on what they're allowing their teachers to spend on different areas. But typically, we would not like to see an individual employee have a purchase order for more than $500 at a time, just because that, that holds them accountable of what they can purchase and making sure. But typically, we'd like to see the smaller, but it's really based on the principal's recommendation and the principal's discretion.
So there's, there's no actual limit in the procedure? It's just circumstantial, really?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
But that is something that, you bring up a good point, Trustee Falaz, is something that we can discuss. Because right now, the idea is, is that the building principal knows their budget, and all major purchases are done through the building principal or through central office. So when we're thinking about teachers going and purchasing things, it could be for an event where they got to purchase some, you know, items. Or maybe they're doing like a project-based assignment, and they tell the principal, hey, I can get this stuff over at this place for this price, you know, and they go and purchase and re-reimburse them. But that is a good conversation we can have on Thursday.
Okay. And my next question was, so I received the finance subcommittee minutes the other day from Kristen, so that was appreciated. The minutes, however, looked extremely vague to me, having not participated in the subcommittee. So it just drove me to look back. So for subcommittees, according to Bylaw 1180, any subcommittee is supposed to provide minutes of those meetings to the rest of the board so they're all informed and have the same information. So just going forward, can we just start sharing that with everyone?
Yes, that can happen. I guess my question would be, what do you mean in regards to vague? What was missing? Or what do you feel may have been missing from the meeting?
Well, I thought it was just too vague, like, there was no detail, there was no, I would like to have seen each item elaborated.
The details are in the notes from Penny Morgan.
Yeah, because the more, the actual report would have been in your Friday update, which is, yeah, right here, would have been all, yeah, so you would have gotten just the fact that the meeting took place, a very just brief outline of the meeting and then...
No, it's detailed.
No, just in the...
The questions are answered.
No, but, yeah, from the minutes, I'm sorry. But then the, the update would have been in the Friday fly, Friday...
Right. But I'm talking from the minutes, from the minutes, and not just for finance, but for every subcommittee, we should be receiving the minutes of that subcommittee.
But I believe you do because it comes in, you get the minutes, and then you get the update of whoever the chair...
We don't get the minutes for a subcommittee meeting.
Have we had any?
We haven't had any.
Well, the only one was the finance. And then Penny had provided the, the information on Friday.
I mean, we have, what, like, 11 subcommittee groups? Or how many do we have?
Let's see. Seven, I think, if that's correct. Am I right? I don't know if Kristen's here. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six.
Okay. So just out of the six, I'm not talking just the last 30 days, I'm talking in general.
What I will do is make sure that those that chair, we can still provide the minutes, and then what will happen is we'll just have to make sure that that minutes are attached to whoever, for example, if it's a personnel meeting, then we'll make sure that it's, the minutes are attached directly to the director of that department so that you would see what was actually discussed.
Yeah. Either attached or isolated, either way, just so we can have that. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Has any other committee met?
No. Oh, was it?
Policy.
Policy, I think.
Policy, we have.
We presented all, because we ended up voting on some of those items.
The policy minutes, I believe, were shared.
Not just shared, but like Linda said, the whole thing was presented again to...
The whole board.
The whole board, yeah. That was a board...
I don't know off the top of my head which committees have met overall, but I know finance has met a few times, policy has met once. And then with the pandemic, I don't think we've met any other committees at this point. Those are the only two.
Yes, Mo?
How do we know when you meet?
Uh, excuse me, Mo?
I was just gonna, so is there a calendar?
It depends, well, there's, you would not necessarily know unless you sat on the committee. So what happens is if the director, so for example, if Penny says, hey, I'd like to have a finance committee meeting, then that committee would be, whoever chairs that meeting, which is, whoever chairs that meeting would then notify the members of the committee, find a time and a date, or depending on what was being suggested, they would meet. And then they would provide that information in a Friday update.
Penny always...
The minutes you meet.
Or in the minutes, yeah, yeah, minutes, and then the, the information on Friday update. So if there were questions that were asked, it would be in the Friday update from the director of that department.
So there's no schedule? The committee only meets when somebody feels that there needs to be a meeting?
As needed, yeah. Just one second, Mo?
It would be a good request to ask that when those meetings do happen, to email the board and say that, even if we're not on it, just so that we know there's notes to come. So that's just a request for some of you guys.
That'll be duly noted because we don't have those meetings quite often, so we'll try to...
No, I understand. But if you have a policy meeting coming up on Tuesday, and you've determined it on Monday, and Kristen's aware of it, just shoot out an email stating that there's a policy meeting tomorrow. I know I'm not on the policy committee, so it doesn't affect me, but at least I know that there was a policy committee.
You would be getting that, that, on that, that week, though. You would be getting it on Friday that the committee met.
After the meeting.
After the meeting.
Not necessarily. Penny puts them in her, she had them in her update before the meeting took place.
True. In that case, yes. But I mean, typically, it just depends on how we get that information. Because it's, it's just as is.
She always puts it, she always puts in the, like, well, when there's, before there's a meeting, it's put that there's a meeting...
That would be coming up. While in this case here, though, the information came to me...
If she knows about it when the Friday update goes out.
If it's hers, no, no, I'm saying, well, she's been requesting a meeting for several weeks, but anyway, just this one.
You're going to request meetings, obviously. They're going to come up, and it's not an issue. But I think, to Ms. Falaz's point, I did call Penny to, to ask about the questions on the debt service. When these notes came out, I understand they're in the Friday meeting, but there was some confusion on my part. Talking about the increase in debt service, it was a little vague in the sense that it didn't lead me to what the train issue was and why the increase in debt service in comparison to platform thrives. So I was just trying to understand what the notes were for, regardless of what's in here. For me, I'd like to be able to look at the notes and be able to determine what was talked about in the finance committee so that it's easier for me to compare to what Penny has for us.
So that, so what, but I, was it not in your minutes, but it was in the final report?
Yeah, yeah.
What do you mean? No, no, I'm talking about the notes for the finance committee, which I requested from Kristen, okay? And when, when they came out, there are line items, okay? But there's one word or two words to those line items. And that's what threw me off, at least, I don't know what she's referring to. But when it has, you know, the debt service and then the name of train after it, and then, you know...
But that's why you're going to hear it during the budget hearing.
Yeah.
That's, she's going to explain all that.
No, I understand that. I want to know before I go into the budget meeting also, which is the same thing as going through the packet. If there was a meeting, I should be able to know what's going on in the meeting, is my request. That's all. Even if I'm not in the meeting. I think everybody should know on this board what's happening in meetings, even in the committees. It can come. I can get the notes, and I can ask the notes during the meeting.
Correct. I understand that, but I, but you do get the, you get the, the information every Friday, and if there's a subcommittee, then there's notes. And then what follows usually with that, and which has happened, is the actual information that was asked at the meeting from the individual that requested to have that meeting. So I'll just say, for example, it would be finance, they provided the questions that would have pertained to that meeting in their Friday update.
The debt service coverage issues weren't in here, that's why I called her. So I'm just asking...
Was that part of, was that part of the meeting, the debt service?
It's on the notes.
Okay.
We did discuss a little bit of it just during my budget, when we talked about the budget, yes.
Okay. All right. Yes?
So I, I think the issue is, what I'm hearing is, we're not talking about, Mo isn't talking about the information that's in the packet. We all open the packet, we get the information. I, I think what, what, you know, is being missed here is...
You want to know when the meetings are?
The minutes. The minutes from the meeting. We, I do, I know I do. I just, you know, shame on, shame on me that I just found out about this. But I would, I would like the minutes from the meeting because, can I say this? Because I was looking over your shoulder, they are very short and vague. So this just says, like, you know, two words, can we know what was discussed? I mean, that's usually how minute, meeting minutes work. What was discussed? Who, who discussed it? Who, am I like, wait?
No, I guess, I, go ahead, Sue.
So, and, and I'm not suggesting this is a bad thing. The minutes from the meeting, Kristen comes to the meetings and she takes minutes. I was there and Ed's, well, I'm always at the, that meeting, but Ed was not there. So I took the notes also. And then Kristen, oh, you're not at the committee meeting.
Not on that committee, so that would have been, yeah, Lisa, yeah.
Lisa was there. And I gave Lisa the notes. I did have two pages of notes. And then usually, they just extract just a little bit of it because when we have a committee meeting, typically at the study session following the committee meeting, the committee chair says, we had a committee meeting and this is what was discussed. And then yay or nay on things that are going to be brought forward. So typically, that's what we've done. We can make sure the notes are more detailed because the notes are not...
That's all we're asking, Sue.
No, no, and I understand. I understand.
I just, you know, like I said, shame on me for, I just found out. But just because a board member, and I don't have to tell you, you've been on the board forever, but just because a board member isn't on a committee, it doesn't mean that they're not privy...
Absolutely.
...to whatever took place at the, at the meeting.
And there's no secrets.
Yeah, there's no, yeah, there's never, yeah. There's, I mean, I don't think anything, anything has ever been kept, you know, from the meeting. That's why there's the, the minutes, and yes, they probably may be vague.
Yeah. I just, I say most point, though, there is a difference between information in the packet and meeting minutes.
Yeah, and usually that follows right after.
And meeting minutes.
Right.
That's all.
Okay.
So I'm going to combine the next two because they're very similar with why furniture has not been purchased for Highview and GSRP.
Is that regarding HR updates? Is that regarding HR updates?
No, we're still in the board study process.
It's still part of the question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is not true yet.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep, because we're supposed to start another one at six.
No, 6:30.
Oh, 6:30, okay.
And we do have to go into closed sessions.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, the two, Highview preschool and GSRP preschool, furniture has not been requested to our level. However, with the pandemic and individuals not being in class, and we didn't know what the outcome of all of the funding was going to be and different things, we did put a hold on furniture purchases per Dr. Masalim at the moment. And so that's why we developed the process for the 21, 22 school year that will be shared with all the principals again this week.
If I may add to that, President Garcia.
Yes.
So I was hoping Penny would say that, I'm glad she did, per me. I put a freeze on all spending for furniture and such purchases, because we have to remember at that time, we had to purchase Chromebooks, we had to purchase Wi-Fi hotspots, we, our focus was on technology, because the kids aren't in the building. Now, the next step in this process is, like Penny mentioned, I'm the 17th, administrators are gonna have a process to work with their head custodian and their maintenance to identify high priority, medium priority, and low priority when it comes to furniture. So that we can go forward and use the 21, 22 school year budget, as well as some ESSR funding, if we can, we're not sure if we can, in order to purchase high priority first, and then purchase medium priorities, so on and so forth. Moreover, as we know, we have the infrastructure needs, that is also a priority over furniture at this point. We gotta have space for the kids to be in, and then we can purchase the furniture with it. So with everything that we've had to deal with during this pandemic and the needs that we had, I wanted to put more money towards technology and human resources than I wanted to put forward in furniture and everything. Like, I can tell you right now, my, one of my top priorities is the Crestwood High School library, as well as a couple other libraries. That's a top priority, we know that is, those chairs and those tables, and they've been there since 1962. So we know that's a high priority.
A lot of things, man.
Exactly, so...
Yeah, walk into those preschool classrooms, because the furniture is peeling.
So the other piece with the preschool, too, is, again, because we're building on infrastructure, if we go in and make orders now before we expand that infrastructure, we want to make sure what we're ordering is correct, and we can order one-shot deal, and we'll get a better price. So this is part of the process right now. Because we were in a pandemic, our focus has shifted, and our focus has shifted towards what's the most cost-efficient method at that time. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. That's why we have held off on ordering any furniture or equipment that weren't necessary at the time.
Makes sense. Penny?
I just have one question.
Sorry.
Yusuf, do you think you'll have furniture before this new school year, new furniture before the new school year?
Where the high needs are, I believe we will.
Yeah, I would just double check with, I don't know, I'll leave that to you guys, but whoever you're ordering from, because I know furniture across the board.
It'll go out, it'll go out as a bid, and all of the major school suppliers, you know, will put their bids out, and that's their focus. Like, they focus on school supplies, so we're not gonna be buying furniture from...
No, no, I know, but there's a lot of things on backorder, because factories were shut down and weren't able to assemble anything, stuff like that.
We're hoping, I mean, we're just being optimistic on everything, because we don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow.
All right, Penny?
Will aides continue to be paid for bus duty before and after school? We will continue to monitor that, the goal is not to have those aides doing the duties in the morning. So we will be having those conversations with the principals again, and we will watch that carefully throughout the year. Yes, ma'am?
Actually, I have to ask you.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yes, please make sure your board chairs recognize, yes, for us all.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, she acknowledged, for you. Different than the aide, but that just triggered a memory for me, crossing guards for the upcoming school year. Did we ever resolve the issue with the city as far as them paying for the crossing guards, and do we have them for all the schools available now?
I can speak to that, it's in one of the Friday updates way, way, way back when. But when the new chief came in, him and I discussed it, and he identified, he said, yeah, you should not be paying. So it was adjusted, and we're not paying.
Okay, thank you.
Historically, I did look up the cost for the sub-costs at Riverside, ranging from $156,000 to $226,000 over the past four years. But that was all in the Friday update. We are watching those those costs, obviously, it went down through this year. The final numbers isn't in, because we had the last two weeks of school that we still had to pay. But we are watching that and actually not necessarily having floating subs, so they will be assigned positions.
If I may add to that, President Garcia, if you remember, one of the first things we did as a new administration is we eliminated all those floating subs, because that was costing us almost $200,000 a year. That was one of our methods of saving. Now with moving forward, and in the new contract, you know, attendance plays a role in evaluation systems. So, you know, that plays a role, and I'll tell you, our 95 to 97% of the people who do what they're supposed to do without even asking, they're in school. You know, they're they're doing their job, so we're gonna continue to monitor that, and our our new administration in the buildings, our current administration is going to continue that monitoring as well.
Can I ask one question?
Nadia?
Yeah, going back to these unit budgets, who's gonna be responsible for them? Is it gonna be the building secretary or...
So if I may answer that, the building principal is the final say on that, he or she signs off. The building secretary is responsible for keeping track of the building budget. The building secretaries are also gonna be responsible for submitting POs. The building secretaries and all secretaries are gonna be responsible for that. What has to happen is, through the process, I, as a principal, receive approval to purchase something. I then go to my secretary and say, here's the information, please put in the PO. When that PO gets to central office, that's where the business team handles it from there. We are gonna streamline the process, we don't want 10 hands in the PO system. We want the principal approving it after business office approves it, the secretary putting in the PO, because then, if there's a problem with the PO, or there's more information we need from the vendor, we're only going through the secretary. So if we need a W-9 form, if we need anything, it's one person, not five people. And that is going to be a big change, and I know trustee Junoon had to deal with it with some things, and you saw how it works, but it's not very difficult.
Yeah, no, who, sorry.
Letter, and then I'll come right to you, she's had a two-part.
Who was responsible for it before this process?
It was the secretaries, but in some situations, in certain departments, in certain schools, there were too hand, too many hands in the pot, and that's why things started going, not missing in terms of money-wise, but like paperwork or documentation. And during the pandemic, it was a lot of back and forth. Please understand, this is new to our district. This, you know, in the past, this process was supposed to be in place, but it was never enforced. And I always reflect on this, and please forgive me, board, but I still say, my very first board meeting was the audit report. And, and, yeah, and I remember looking at the, I remember the board looking at me and saying, you're gonna fix all this, right, Yusuf? And I said, yes, once I get a business person to help me fix it. So everything that has been in the audit report for the last five years has been corrected. Now, have we gone a little bit above, yeah, we have, because we want to ensure everything is where it needs to be before we start relaxing things. I will not, and Penny knows this, we will not spend a penny, no pun intended. You know, we will not spend a penny unless it follows the procedure and the process. Because as a superintendent, it's my responsibility to ensure that the finances that we give the Board of Education are followed through and are correct.
I just want to ask you, just if you can clarify...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you said the last five years are correct or were corrected?
We've corrected them, we've corrected the audit issues for the last five years.
Dijon?
So I think, like, it is, it is very simple, I think that the only thing is, is we need to make sure that we're holding everybody accountable. Because I firsthand saw how easily a vendor might not get paid. But still, then want to make sure that they are paid within, like I know Mrs. Berry said as well, within the right, you know, a reasonable time timeline as well, but or timeframe.
Just for clarification, the vendor that you're speaking of today, that you delivered the W-9, thank you very much, that will go get processed on Friday, so we were just waiting for that W-9.
Okay, all right.
All right, anything else? Okay.
All right, when the new copiers are in, I know Dr. Masalim, they talked today about discussing the process for limits and different things, and so we'll be discussing that procedure once the new copiers are in, and we'll be able to train the staff on how to use the secure print items and all of those things.
This is the one situation that my business, my CFO says I'm being too stingy, and that doesn't happen often. She usually yells at me for spending too much money.
The current data person, Dr. Masalim, had a conversation with that individual this past week, so that, as it was said, the position has been eliminated. So the outstanding lawsuits, we do have one outstanding litigation, and I did discuss that in my Friday update. So if there's questions about that, I can go into more detail. We will be opening the pool to the community, Mr. Schle is working with the community pool person, I don't remember her name, but the the one that runs the summer program, the programs, the pool programs, and working to get senior swim opened up and those things for the summer. So we are working on that.
Mike Schley has reached out to Miss Constan, he's the rec, yes, the rec department director. I know, because we do want to establish senior swims, so we can open up the pool to our senior citizens, so they can come in and use our pool.
And then the last question that was on there was the projected, or the last few years of food service revenue or fund balance for food service. We did have a hefty fund balance from '16, '17, '18, and '19, and '20, in September of '20. So September of 2019 was when they purchased a lot of new equipment and new items through the bond and things, but used some of the food service fund balance to purchase the new equipment in the kitchens. And so then our fund balance went down as of June 30th of 2020 to $100,000. It's projected that it should be about $290,000 at the end of this year, yes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's okay, I know, you see my hand up. So you're saying they purchased all kinds of equipment last year?
It was in 2019, it was probably July, August, it was before I got here, so I can't tell you exactly the month.
It was going into the bond, yeah, freezer.
I'm just trying to figure out how we had less last year and more this year in our fund balance, if...
Are you referring to 1920 or 2020?
20, was it 1920? Well, we're still, we're still the CEP, so every meal that we get counts for breakfast. We decreased, but we also decreased supplies, so we decreased a lot of of spending, because we didn't have, I'll just take an example, the pizzas that we did in the daily cafeterias for the high school and middle school, that was about $150,000 to $200,000 on the budget the year before. So those things like that didn't come up.
It's not a bad thing, I was just...
No, but again, that can fluctuate, but that was my projection for right now.
Okay.
One of, the thing with the pandemic is we were able to reduce costs in other areas, because we, you know, you weren't functioning at a full capacity, so you're able to save money in other costs, that usually would cost you more. And therefore, that's why we were able to move that money into our fund balance for future expenses.
All right.
I believe that's all the questions from the subcommittee meeting that we had that needed to be addressed. There were some other smaller ones that were addressed in more detail in the Friday update, but I think that covered pretty much all of it.
If I may add two real quick, come the 17th, we're fully staffed. July 1, we're fully staffed, we're fully staffed across the board. This is the first time since I've been superintendent that we're fully staffed. I mean, we've hired people, but we haven't been fully staffed. So it's really gonna make a difference, because it's gonna help with that consistency now, and the procedures and understanding and conversations. So we are very, you know, we, as a team, we are very excited for this upcoming school year, because we're gonna be able now, as I put in one of my messages to the board, that's when the hard work is gonna start. People think the pandemic was hard, no, hard work is starting come July 1, because now we're gonna be going into the next phase. And that next phase is taking our district to another level.
Thank you. Mrs., or Dr. Lazar, sorry, my apologies, Dr. Lazar, any HR updates?
No, it's, yeah, no.
Okay, Nadia?
I was reading that we're, the psychologists, how many do we have district-wide?
Psychologists?
Yeah, prior to the hiring of the two.
Two, so we've been functioning on one short, we've been contracting those services out to fill that gap. And so as was stated in my Friday update, this will allow us to hire the third, which will be fully staffed, and add the additional position with the extra funding that we got to expand social emotional services, as we've discussed quite a bit. So it's gonna be really great to have that team.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that four, we're not gonna need more than four, though, right?
If you remember, we had three, but the board said, hire another one.
No, I know, but now we're getting two for, yeah.
Because we've been functioning on one short.
I'm just, I'm just trying to...
I was wondering the same thing.
No, having four is gonna be very nice, because now we can give, psychologists don't just test students, they work with kids, they work with families. This is gonna give them the flexibility to do so.
All right, and then moving on, are there any updates Superintendent Moussalem, anything that...
On my end, the the only updates that pertain to study session is we are going to, you know, continue, as discussed, looking at procedures. I gotta stay away from using the word policy, because it's something different, that's a, you know, Penny has educated me on that, as well as Linda. You know, we're just at a point right now where we want to continue moving forward, and we want to support everyone in the process, and we want to remain cost-effective.
Okay, all right. With that, I'm going to ask if there are no other questions. I am going to request that we end this meeting, so I'll call for an adjournment. I'm going to give everyone here an opportunity to to take a quick break, and then the board is gonna go into an executive session, and then we will be prepared to begin promptly at 6:30 for your next section, which is the budget hearing. So with that, Madam Secretary, I'll just request for, I'll I'll make the motion and then look for a support, okay? And then ask for a vote, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the purpose of this will be to discuss a personnel issue.